Thank you.
That's officially on tape now.
Good.
Attribution to that. So, we have a workshop here tonight to discuss the details of an assessment plan, or actually, a funding plan for road improvements, road construction in the city of Now Then. We titled it "An Assessment Policy," but I think what we're looking for tonight is relying on the professionals that work for the city here to guide us into what do we need to do so that we can have a policy or guideline in place that will help us evaluate how to fund road improvements that are necessary in the city. So, in particular, what can we do, what can't we do? What in your experience has been best practices when you're dealing with, not only the legal side of things and the physical side of things, but the emotional side of things when you're dealing with residents? And how do we best present this and communicate? So, what do we as a council need to know to be able to communicate effectively with our residents? What we're doing, how we're doing it, why we're doing it, the way we're doing it? And the understanding that the groundwork we would come in with is we can assess a certain amount of roadwork under certain conditions. We can bond for roadwork under certain conditions, meet in certain criteria. And obviously, we can adjust our levy to incorporate some of the cost of that. And so, part of it is the mechanics. How do we do this? And so, we've got city engineer, city attorney, and financial advisor here to help us with that. And so, we want to know the practical aspects, but also the pragmatic aspects, you know, what works? And then, as we talk about that, we do have a road study, probably needs to be updated, but we have a road study of the condition of all the roads that are in town. We have our three members of our road and bridge committee here with us tonight as well. This is the things they wrestle with all the time. What needs to be done, how do we fund it? And so, in that, what's the best way, once we decide how to do it, to approach it? How do we determine which roads? It's been suggested, obviously, you start with the worst roads, but we also want to take care of the roads we have so they don't become worse than they are. And we proposed originally, three scenarios. Old Viking has a potential for an overlay, the Rogers Lake area, potential for overlay, and a road we've been doing work on sporadically over the years, Ebony and Garnett, in the south part of the city. It's also come up recently that there are some residents that live on gravel roads that are inquiring as to how they could petition the city, along with their neighbors, to convert those gravel roads to blacktop. And so, we need those scenarios presented from you, our professionals, so that we can then have the tools to make good decisions. So, we're trying to get as much information as we can tonight. Questions will be welcome, obviously, from the road and bridge and from the council. But I'd like to start with the professionals and say, what do you guys, what's your experience been? And, you know, starting with what we can do, can't do, and what's worked? And I don't know, it's probably, I don't know, Bob's, yours might be shorter.
Mine's probably going to be one of the shortest, because it's really dealing with the law. It sounds like, for the most part, most of what you're-
Just for the record, now that we're on YouTube, I should make sure that we introduce. This is Bob Rupe, our city attorney, and he'll be addressing the legal aspects. And then Shane, when you speak, you can introduce yourself and Bruce as well.
So, this is Bob Rupe. I'm the city attorney. The process, 420, it's called Minnesota Chapter 429. It's a very straightforward process. You do have to follow all the procedures, but it is, I would say, the traditional way for towns to finance, or cities and towns to finance road improvement projects. And if you assess to benefiting property owners, in other words, out of a $100,000 project, if 20% of that, the funds that you need to pay for that project are going to be assessed to the benefiting property owners, then you can bond for it. And that's where Bruce comes in and helps you figure out what is the best instrument for you to incur debt to pay the bonds back. And so, traditionally, on a 429 project, there is a component that is paid for by the city, and then there's a component paid for by the residents. And that is kind of a policy call for you, the city, to determine. Shane can probably tell you, and I can, everybody's got a little bit different thing. Everybody's got a different philosophy on it, how much they will contribute. But the idea here is to, the limitation on how much you can assess to a benefiting property is limited by what they call the benefit test. And the easiest way to think about that is, if my house is worth $100,000 right now on this road before it's improved, and that's based on an appraisal, you know, and then after you guys finish the road project, that same appraiser comes back and says, oh, your property value's increased by $10,000, well, then, that's the benefit for that property, and that's the limit to what you can assess. So, when you are thinking about one of these projects, and you have Shane identify which roads are the ones that are most beneficial, and like you said, you may not want to start with the one that's in the worst shape, because that road may be too far gone. You want to get the road that, when you put the money into it, you can get the biggest bang for your buck and extend its life and have the most longevity at the least amount of cost. And so, a lot of times, what we try to do is, once your engineer has identified the road project, and has identified sort of the cost of that project, then you guys look at it and say, okay, is this part of my budget? How much are we going to pay for this project? And then, how much are we going to assess to the benefiting properties? And where you get that money to pay for that assessment may be by raising the levy to include more money for road and bridge, with the understanding that this is something that you guys need to do. It may be that you guys determine that we're going to fund it through more, through assessments than the city's contribution, or it may be you have some sort of other alternative where you borrow funds for the city's contribution and up front the cost of the property owners, because you have to pay the contractor right away, and then you're going to pay the debt back when the assessments are paid with people's property taxes. Generally, when you do the assessment, it's generally something that's spread out over usually a 10-year period. So, if the amount, after Shane comes back and says, my construction estimate is $100,000 for this project, and you, the city, say that you're going to pay a certain percentage of it, in your wisdom, you guys have to sort of determine that, the amount that's left over will be spread out amongst those benefiting properties. And it can differ depending on the type of property. Residential property may be one amount of assessment, commercial property may be a different amount, industrial. The law just says that you have to treat the same classification of property, same type of property, the same. And so, then the other thing that happens a lot of times on road projects is that sometimes there's people that live on the road, that are directly, have their mailboxes, you know, their driveways right on that road, they get what they call a full assessment amount, because they get the most bang for their buck on their property taxes, and property value's increasing. But then, there are other people that also would benefit from having this road improved. And maybe they don't have their driveway right on this road, but maybe this road, they have to use this road to get to theirs, and there's some benefit there, and they call that an indirect benefit. And a lot of times, those people maybe get a quarter of assessment, but it can vary. And so, it's one of those things that Shane, when he's doing his reports on this in the very beginning, will figure that kind of out when he's looking at what roads are going to be done, and then he usually, as part of his, what they call a feasibility report, will put that together and show it on a graphic. And that can be changed by the council, and sometimes we do. And the one I just did for another town, the feasibility report came back from their engineer, and they looked at it and says, no, these other people here are benefiting, and they had the engineer amend the feasibility report accordingly. And so, it's that sort of thing that you do. The process itself is really straightforward. The first thing is, is to, you guys order a feasibility report from your engineer. So, then Shane will go and will study this road, will figure out what he thinks the proposed cost might be, will figure out who the proposed areas to be assessed are, and then figure out sort of what the assessment would look like. He would need some guidance from you guys about what your plan is for paying down that assessment, you know, how much would you contribute from the road and bridge funds for this project?
Can I just ask a question there, Bob? When you say that, individual projects, can they be structured differently? I know the properties have to be treated the same within a project, but can individual projects be all different?
Yeah, maybe you can address that for a second, about Credit River, and they have used them as an example, and they have different policies, different types of things.
Right, yeah, I mean, Shane Nelson, city engineer, Mr. Mayor and Council, generally, you treat different types of roads differently. So, if you have a local road, it only provides access to individual residents, that is usually treated differently than, say, a collector road, that is used as more of a collector, and you have local streets that may funnel off of that collector road.
If I can just jump in, I'm Bruce Kimmel with Ellers, financial advisor. There may be roads in your road plan, either current road plan or future, where you decide for a variety of reasons that you're either not going to assess up to that 20% threshold, it might be a lesser amount of assessments, or that you don't assess at all, and you look to other funding options, and I'll be discussing some of those as well. So, it's a fluid situation. I totally agree that assessments, you've had the precedent here, it probably makes a lot of sense for a lot of your roads, but there may be situations, and I've worked with a lot of cities, that have decided that, for a variety of reasons, they're moving away from 429 assessments for some of their street reconstruction, and I'll be talking about that.
So, the process is relatively straightforward. When you decide you have a road that you would like to use the 429 process on, the first thing is ordering a feasibility report, and that's something your engineer will put together. Then, what you would probably do after that, after you get it and review it, if you don't have any changes or amendments that you'd like to see to it, then you approve the, and adopt the feasibility report. And the next step is to call for what they call an improvement hearing. There are two public hearings. The first one is called an improvement hearing, and we give notice to everyone that might be in the project area, might be assessed, and we publish it, and post it, and so forth. And then, you guys have this public hearing. Now, if you're talking about best practices, kind of like, how do we interact with the, with people that might be assessed, I like the idea that, and Shane uses this a lot in the communities that we both work for, is having informational meetings. And before you even get to this stage, usually, once you get the feasibility report, because you want to have just a general idea yourselves about what the estimated cost of this project is, who might be assessed, kind of what the assessment amount might be, it's, you know, timelines for the project and stuff that are usually found in these reports. And then, typically, what you do is you have a informational meeting, and usually, it's a presentation by Shane about kind of what road, why this road was selected. Usually, he uses, like, you don't steal your thunder, but usually, you have pictures of the road, you have, and you explain why this road should be done now in order to preserve its longevity. You know, it may not be the worst road in the city, but it may be the road that, if you intervene now and you do what he's recommending, you might get another 15, 20 years off of this road, and you wouldn't have to have the really big cost. And generally, what we also explain is, if we late, if we wait on this, then the costs go up exponentially, and Shane's got charts and stuff that show that. And that is the, I think, for a lot of times, for best practices, you can do it at both the informational meeting and at the public hearing, but at the public hearing, you're also going to open it up to the public and let them all comment. Like any public hearing, you can put some restrictions on it in terms of time and so forth, but generally, it's your, their opportunity to give you feedback about whether they feel like this project should go forward or not. And you hear it, some people will love it, some people hate it, you will always hear, my tax dollars, I pay taxes, what is, why should I have to pay an assessment? Nobody else has to, I pay tax. You're going to hear that. It's always, every single time. It's like a mantra, you know? And, but again, it's one of those things where people need to be made to understand that you have limited tax dollars, and you have a lot of roads, and you have a lot of need, and the only way that you guys can balance this out and to make it fair and equitable is by spreading the cost out amongst so much from the city and so much paid for by the benefiting property owners. And so, at the end of, so, it'd be a little hand-writed here, but I'm finding as we do things for the first time as a city, we need to be specific in our step-by-step. So, the informational meeting, we've got a feasibility report reviewed by the council, approved by the council, where would you put an informational meeting?
I would probably put the informational meeting, you kind of want to have some numbers, because people will start talking to you, and you don't want to talk in generalities. That just annoys people. And so, I would probably say, have the informational meeting after you get the feasibility report.
Generally, before you approve the feasibility report. You might find out some information at the neighborhood meeting that you didn't consider, or that I didn't consider, when we were looking at the feasibility report, and so, then we still have time to amend the feasibility report before the council adopts it.
Before the improvement hearing was.
Right.
And it does, you know, and you, that, and people do give you comments back, I mean, in these open houses, you do hear from people, and you hear a lot of other things, too. Drainage issues, things that, you know, maybe, you know, you're not aware of, and they say, well, yeah, didn't you know about that? Well, yeah, this has got this, and this has got this problem, and this has this, and certain types of conditions, and then you have an opportunity to go back and engineer, Shane can go look at it, figure it out, and that may be something else that's incorporated into the project. But the people have some buy-in. They understand, you haven't made any decisions, you're asking for their feedback. You never get to vote on this. There is no place for residents at any stage of this to vote yea or nay. It's always with the council's decision, but people do feel like they've been listened to, they may not agree with it, but they feel like at least their concerns are raised. And a lot of times, you're trying to address everybody's issues, and if you don't know about them, you can't. So, this is informal, you may get maybe, maybe a third of the people that might be in the assessment area, you're not going to get everybody. And then, once you get that information from them, Shane can amend the feasibility study if it needs to be, and then, and like I said, that other community that I was just with, they did amend it. They found whole areas that they didn't expect, and everybody's saying, well, why aren't these people included? And the engineer looks at me, and we looked at him, but, ooh, you're right, they probably are indirect, that is their only way to get in there, when you think about it. And, because what, they also had another access, and that's why the engineer said, no, not to include them, but when you look at it, that access was on a gravel road, and nobody used the gravel road, they wanted to all stay on paved, so we included them. And so, yes?
Just a question, based on your last comment. So, you refer to indirect as that's the only access, so if there's another access or paved access, usually, they're not considered an indirect, and then-
No, that's up to you guys. Generally, the last couple of I've seen, they have, that was their main access. But again, it doesn't have to be their only access, like in this situation that I was just talking about, they had more than one access, but generally, the flow of traffic benefited, went over the paved road, maybe that's closer to the interstate, maybe that's the shortcut, maybe that is the old road that would make it all paved, and people don't want to get their cars dirty. All of these things are things you would take a look at. And again, you're not making that decision in a vacuum, we would help you, you know, Shane looking at it from his point of view, me looking at it from a legal point of view, because at the end of the day, I have to be able to justify this to a judge, any decision that we make.
So, you know, when we're township, we used to hold two meetings together. We used to have like a public hearing and an assessment hearing the same night, and that helps speed up the process somewhat. And the assessment hearing was kind of a worst-case scenario, so the numbers are probably higher, because when the project's done, then you have a final assessment hearing, but you can't raise the numbers, but you can lower them. And so, is your public hearing you're talking about, is that the assessment hearing, or is that just, it's just an informational-
There is, well, first, we're talking about best practice, just an informational meeting. No, no, it's just voluntary, you don't have to do it, it's not required by statute. The first of the two public hearings is what they call the improvement hearing. The second public hearing is that assessment hearing. Can you combine them? Yes, you can. I have done it, it's not something that you typically do, but yes, you can. And the only time we've done that is when, you know, we're under the gun. Something's happened to a road, we need to, you know, it's gotten washed out or something, we need to do this, we're trying to beat the construction deadlines, so we typically, we can shorten the, truncate the process.
But it also speeds up the process, because if they want to fight the assessment process, they have a process that they need to follow, too. So, I'll let you as a council, and we'll run it away, okay, we have two people that have filed papers against it, so then it helps us weigh out whether we want to go forward with the project or not. So, if you keep, you keep pushing that stuff out, it can lengthen your, it could take your many months to get your project just-
Well, here's the, let's talk, let's finish the process, and then I'll talk about coordination on these things, okay? On the process, first is the feasibility report. Once you get the feasibility report, then you notice and have what they call the improvement hearing. Yes?
Is that the same as the info meeting?
No.
No, it's, okay.
It's like it, but it's, but this one, now, Mary, you're in the formal mode, this is the noticed public hearing, this is your opportunity.
Improvement hearing.
So, if I'm understanding, feasibility report, you'd have, best practice would be an informational meeting before the review and approval by council. So, you have informational meeting, and if there's something that's brought up, you'd have a amended feasibility report, which would then be reviewed by council, approved by council, and then the next formal, start of the formal process would be the improvement hearing, which is a public hearing, where the affected parties would be noticed.
And they have an opportunity to be heard officially. And the only difference between the informational meeting and the improvement hearing is that this is the official public notice. And so, you hold that public hearing, and if you're going to proceed with the project, you adopt a resolution called ordering the improvement.
So, Bob, just to clarify, is that the point at which the council officially accepts the feasibility study, or?
No, that's usually the point. The feasibility study is accepted at a town or city council meeting ahead of time. So, the city council meeting, when the feasibility report is in its final form, you've gotten all the input you wanted, and it's in its final form, generally, there's a resolution accepting the feasibility report, and at the same time, and at same resolution, calling for that improvement hearing, and ordering the clerk to give notice and publish, post, and provide mail notice to all the residents that are affected. So, that is the, and if I realized, I didn't realize that's what we were doing tonight, otherwise, I'd have a handout for you with all these steps, I couldn't put it, you know, it's not that difficult to put in each of these steps. So, if- That's something you can- Oh, yeah. And then, once you, you know, hold the public hearing, then the law says, it's all statutory, it says you have six months to what they call order the improvement. In other words, are you going to order, adopt a resolution saying, okay, we want to order this improvement, and at the same time, you generally will say, okay, Hawkinson Anderson will be the engineers on this project, and they are now authorized to go and prepare plans and specs. And that's, so then, there's some, kind of dies down for a little bit to give Shane and his people time to prepare the plans and specs, you guys have a chance to review it, and then you would accept the plans and specs, approve them, and then you authorize advertisement for bid, and you go out for bid, because these projects are put out for the initial bid process. And then, once the bids come back, we have also, we know from working with Shane, when the bids are supposed to come back, and then you can see exactly what the cost is going to be. That's when we typically, to try and get to Randy's thing, that's a lot of what most cities and towns are doing now, is they're coordinating that. So, the bids come back, you know how much the lowest bid is, so you kind of know what your costs are going to be. And then, about a week or so later, after you get the bids and you have a chance to review them, we have what they call the assessment hearing. And we notice that hearing, and we also, at that point in time, have the numbers, so we can kind of, if we're going to, people, if the assessment's going to go lower, you can notice it lower, I mean, because if you've got a really good savings on the bids, and because before, all you're doing, everything based on construction estimates from the engineer, well, now you actually have hard numbers. And so, you can tell people at this assessment hearing, although we noticed it, we told you at the improvement hearing, we thought it would be $10,000 a parcel or whatever, then now it's going to be $8,000, because the prices, the bids came back lower. The other thing, by this time, you'll probably have been working with your financial advisor, and before, we would give an estimate for interest. The law says you can adopt interest rates whatever you wish, but typically, what we do is, we take whatever interest rate we end up paying. You know, Bruce goes out and gets us the best deal he can, and say it's 2%, then we by law, because you're bonding, and you have to have a little bit of a cushion, it's not something, you know, this is state law, you typically will use the interest rate of a point and a half to two points over that. So, if it's 2% is what we have to pay, we're going to have the interest rate on the assessments for three and a half to four.
The problem with doing the assessment hearing after the bids is, you don't know if anybody's going to contest it.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
But if they now have to contest it, you've already spent all that money on plans and specs, and so, if you don't move forward with it, you're out that money as a city. And that's why it's really, you can run an assessment hearing based on the engineer's estimate, estimate, and everybody can test it, so before you have the plans and specs done, you can make decisions, you know, we had one, or we had nobody, nobody contested it, nobody's filed their papers to contest this, and you can move forward, and then the city won't be out anything.
Okay, but let me, before we, you know, let's go through this whole process, because I'm going to get people really confused about why we're talking about these different things. Yes? All right, so, ordering the improvement, we have jumped a little bit. So, we order the improvement where, when in this? After the improvement hearing. Okay. You have, the law says you have six months after that improvement hearing, public hearing, to adopt this resolution saying, yeah, we want to proceed. And when you're ordering the improvement, doesn't mean you can't get, you can't kill this project, it just means this is the next step under the statute.
That's right, it's not ordering the actual physical project.
I can get you out of this until such time as you award the contract. When the bids come back and you award the contract, that's the point of no return, as far as I'm looking at it from a legal point of view, because at that point in time, if I awarded somebody a million-dollar contract for those road improvements, you know, and at that point in time, if I said, oh, I've changed my mind, I'm going to get sued, and we're going to owe them the money. So, but let's, let's just finish the project, this sort of the timeline, and then we can modify it as needed, okay? So, we do the, you get the bids back, you order the plans and specs, you've advertised for bids, you get the bids back, you've then noticed the assessment hearing, and generally, most cities and towns will, you know, wait, because we haven't ordered the contract yet, and if we get any of these challenges, we'll know. And the reason for that is, at this assessment hearing, the statute says, you have, if you're a property owner in this area, and you object to this assessment, you have to provide written notice that you intend to challenge us before the close of that public hearing. So, you can either do it beforehand, and send it to Cory, and she keeps a record of it, or at that public hearing, and it, and so, at that public hearing, when that, when that gavel goes down and closes that public hearing, if those people have not filed any sort of written objection to it, then I have a way to, when they try to go into court to do it, I have a way to get the thing dismissed, and I've done it. And so, that is where, the reason why you always want to have that done before you award the contract is, that's the point of no return. So, if I, and I have seen this, in one I had a couple of weeks ago, there was a township, and somebody objected, and they handed in on a sheet of paper like this, I said, all I need is your name and address, and I object, that's enough under the law, just can it to me? These two ladies went in, and they wrote, were against this, and they handed it in. The town board looked at them and said, okay. The town board looked at them and said, okay, uh, this project is dead, we're not doing it. And they were very serious-
You don't, you don't, it's not a poison pill, it doesn't, it's your decision-
Doesn't automatically kill it.
Right, it's your decision based on your lawyer's advice, on your engineer's advice. Are you pushing the envelope on the assessments? Do you think they might have a reasonable argument? Or if you think you're really, really reasonable on what you're asking them to bear as a share of the burden, you might say, well, we're still going forward with it because it's a small number of people and we really don't think the, their challenge to the benefit test or the proceedings is gonna pull up.
But it's a little bit different than that, Bruce. And this is where, this is what you need to-
Those must've been some pretty powerful ladies.
This is, well, no, this is what you need to, cause they submitted the objection. But this town board said, no, we are not doing this project if I have to pay the lawyer. Because once they object and they're telling us, we're gonna file in court, I have to go in and that's not covered by your insurance. So that means any of those costs are paid for by the city or in that case, the township. And it could be a ten thousand dollar, you know, fifteen thousand dollar or more hit for each of these cause you're gonna have attorney's time in there, you're going to have appraisal costs. Yeah, cause you have to have experts to testify and stuff. So the court, the, the town board said, we're not going to do this project if we are spending money on the lawyer. And those ladies, because there was a lot of people that wanted this project, they asked if they could withdraw their objection. So they came up and I said, you know, I want you to write on this that we withdraw the objection. And then they, then the town board voted to proceed with the project. But we, they were very clear. Now, what Bruce said is true, it's up to you guys. I have had town boards that said, you know what, we have a couple of people said they're gonna object, but we really do think this project needs to get done and we think we've been reasonable in the cost and we're gonna proceed anyway. And the, the, the assessment that you guys adopt, under the law, is presumed valid. So it's a rebuttable presumption, it's presumed valid and you guys knew what you're doing, you got professional advice, you guys did it, the benefit's there. They have to con, the property owner has to convince a judge that this assessment was somehow, you know, too high. It was not, not reasonably related back to the, the benefit to their property. So, but the other thing they have to, you have to factor in is although we have costs too, so will they.
Right.
You know, so again, a lot of this sometimes is just plain chicken. The other thing you need to keep in mind is if somebody at that assessment hearing does submit that written objection, that doesn't mean they're actually gonna go and spend the money on a lawyer, to hire a lawyer, to draw up the complaint, to serve the, the city, then to go and file it in district court and then they have to pay for appraisal and attorney's time and everything. So again, it's gotta have to be something that they really feel strongly about. And the times that I have seen the challenges have been more or less, um, kinda people that, I don't care how much it costs, this is just wrong and I'm gonna do it.
Damn the torpedoes.
You know, economics be damned, you know?
I have a question for you. So let's say you've got a fifty beneficiary project, one of them protests and puts the money and damn the torpedoes and the judge finds, yeah, city, you're charging them too much. Their assessment should be, let's say, you're, you, the proposed assessment was ten thousand and let's say the judge says it should be five thousand. Does that judgment just apply to that one beneficiary? Or does it somehow spread to the rest of the project?
No, that's a good question. It only applies to that one person who challenged. So if nobody else challenges, they're paying the full assessment amount. If that person challenged and the judge reduced it, they still have to pay the amount that was not reduced, but they don't, but this, but who pays that other five? That, that comes out of the city levy. And that's the other thing. So when you don't, aren't really sure about what the value is to the properties, in those situations, I use what they call a, a, a drive-by appraisal. I don't wanna pay, you know, ahead of time for a, a full-blown litigation appraisal, you know? And, and if you read any materials on this, the commentators are all saying, you've gotta, you know, almost like it's a, a legal requirement to go get an appraisal for every property. No, it's not. But you, but, but you, if you're not sure what the value of property is in your area and you guys, you, most of the people pretty, are pretty, pretty good about it, then what I've suggested is that we get an appraisal done. And not a full-blown appraisal, but I, I call it a drive-by. We hire an, uh, usually I use Bill Waiters office and we've used them in every time of court litigation that we've done and we've never lost with them because he's good and he's conservative. And so they look at it and they say, yeah, you're a little high here. I have used it before in the very beginning of stuff when a town, I'm thinking this one, this a town, and they came back and they wanted to charge, they only had a few lots on this road. But the cost of fixing this road up to, to doing it was gonna be about twenty-four thousand dollars a lot. Well, there's no way I could show benefit on that. And so, and they wouldn't believe me. So I said, well, let's spend five hundred bucks on this guy, you know, come out and give us a report about what the benefit is. And it turns out the benefit was about seven hundred or seventy-eight hundred dollars, maybe eight thousand, you know, somewhere in that range. Well, I had to have a, a meeting with this town board and explain to them that if you assess this and these people challenge, they're probably going to. We're, you're, you're gonna have awarded that contract and you're gonna have to come out of pocket for that. So these are all the different reasons why Randy is, you know, saying, hey, there's ways to do this so that you know ahead of time how many people might be serious. And you kinda know your residents, you can kinda tell if somebody is just, you know, just mad that one night and they'll never do anything about it. Or if they are a true believer and it doesn't matter what the costs for them are, they're gonna spend the money on the lawyer and the appraiser and all the other experts to, to, to have their day in court. Because we have to match them sort of thing by thing here and-
So that's where the peer pressure, if the neighbors, one, one person, one property holds it up, the neighbors really want it and so he says, we're not gonna fight it. Like the ladies, there's enough people there that said, you probably don't wanna really fight that.
Well, there was one that was done in one of the projects Shane and I worked with. This was, at this time, the insurance company did cover, uh, the assessments. This was probably ten years ago or so or more. And they did at that time, cover it. And what we found out afterwards from one of the residents was they saved three thousand dollars off, that was the settlement, Jay Squire's handling it. And they saved three thousand dollars off of, of twelve thousand dollar assessment, they got nine. But they paid about fourteen thousand for the lawyer and stuff, so they lost money. And again, so those things, you know, are, all happen. But that, so other than, so after you typically do the assessment-
See that question before we get too far.
Yeah, I actually didn't have a question, I just thought maybe we could spend just a couple of minutes talking about why we should be considering doing road projects. So I had a, I mean, we've prepared our, our street study, we've discussed it, uh, it was back in two thousand twelve. We really haven't discussed it since then and I, if the council and the road and bridge was interested, I was just gonna spend a couple of minutes kind of talking about why we should be considering going through this process, that sounds so-
Well, let me finish the process so that you guys have heard the, then after that, after you do the assessment hearing, then traditionally you would award the contract if you were gonna go forward with it, you'd complete the project. And then in, in the, I would say you, you would wait on adopting the assessment rule so that, you know, if there was, you, you, you can adopt the assessment rule at any point in time after you've held the assessment hearing. Generally, if you know that's what it's gonna be, um, there're not gonna be any more cost savings anywhere, then you can adopt it, it gets sent off to the county and it's put on people's property taxes how you guys determine it's supposed to be. Traditionally, as I said, it's ten years and then whatever interest rate is whatever we're charged plus a, a percentage of, and a half to two percent.
And so we'll typically estimate high for the purposes of the assessment hearing and say, we think the assessment rate is going to be, let's say, four and a half percent. And then after, if you do sell bonds, then you can reduce the interest rate accordingly to, you know, if you end up at a two percent rate on your bonds and you decide you're gonna be at a hundred and fifty basis points over, then you would actually tell Anoka County, the rate's actually three and a half percent instead of the four and a half that we estimated for the assessment hearing.
Legally, you're supposed to go through the whole process again. I have never done that. Anytime I can save people money-
Yeah.
I figure, let them sue me.
Right.
You know, and, and complain to a judge that I didn't go through that to save them extra money.
How much of a prepayment window is legally obligated before the, before the city sends it?
Minimum of thirty days.
Okay. So after the assessment hearing, you know, people have an option to, if they just wanna write a check? And that becomes really important from my position as the, the financing advisor because we don't want the city to bond for the whole project cost if you're gonna get half of the people that are just gonna write a check upfront and pay it in cash. We would want to reduce the bond size accordingly, right, to the best we can. We have no crystal ball. In Minnesota, you're also legally, um, you legally have the right as an assessment payer to just do an early payoff. If you, at any point you decide, you just wanna be done paying the semi-annual payments with your property taxes, you can just get the balance, the assessment balance and pay it off with any accrued interest up to that point. That's not true of all states, but what that means is that, you know, the city staff might be sitting on some early paid-off assessments even after you've sold the bonds before you can actually then do a redemption of the bonds. And so that's one of the things we tend to discuss a lot. Shane is often having conversations with property owners. He might be hearing things as to whether people are likely to amortize over the full ten years or to do an upfront prepayment or if it's for a residential subdivision, you know, where there's gonna be a lot of lots sold. Typically, those assessments get paid off when people buy those lots and do their own financing. And so we might structure the bonds in a way to give you more flexibility in paying off those bonds earlier than normal to try to match up with the possibility that you're gonna be getting those assessment back, those assessment payments faster than you thought you would. So it's, it's, it's never a perfect science, but we try to limit the amount of risk that you have in actually floating the financing.
And that's also, I think, another reason for that little bit of a spread on the interest rates.
Right.
Because you are gonna have people that may let the land go tax forfeit or don't pay their taxes for a given year and you need a little bit of a cushion because your full faith and credit of the town's behind this. So that's why I think there, the statutes mandate that you have this.
And if, exactly, for those reasons. And if somebody does pay off after two years and you're expecting to collect interest from them for ten years and we can't prepay the bonds for another five years, that interest spread helps to make up the difference because, you know, the city can only maybe invest that money at one or two percent if you're lucky and if the bond rate is two and a half percent, you're, you know, it's called negative arbitrage, you're losing some money there so that differential can help offset some of the, the potential for, for loss.
I guess I'll just mention when you're talking about that, there may be extra money left over at the end.
Right.
And I had a, I had a meeting with a township, uh, the other night and they had just paid off a, a bond and they had some money left over and they couldn't believe that it was a substantial amount of money. I think it was gonna be a little over a hundred thousand dollars. And they, but if you think about it, that bond was over a twenty-some year period and for this, this improvement thing. And they, once they pay it off, it's their money. It can be used for any purposes they want, it's not dedicated to any specific fund and stuff. So the only reason I mention that is because of that spread, if you don't ever have to use it, you may accumulate some, uh, funds at the end of this project. And I should just tell you now, you know, since, cause I got the call, they were panicked, they thought they had goofed something up. And no, this was, it was, it was planned that way under the statute. But the converse is true. And typically, I get the call because there is a shortfall and I'm on the phone with Bruce or Todd or Hagan, his partner, or one of the, and we're trying to figure out what happened and it's usually something dealing with a prepayment or something where it wasn't accounted for and there was a little bit. But you're still full of faith and credit, so it comes out of your levy. So, all of these things, it's there, it's a normal course of business. I agree with, with Randy. We try to structure it somehow so that we know ahead of time, before we at least award the contract, that's your point of no return, if anybody's gonna challenge us, so that you guys can make an informed decision whether you wanna proceed, knowing that there may be some legal costs involved. And there are different ways of doing it, uh, you know, what the way I kind of explained it or as Randy also said, you can't combine these so that if you wanted to do this all as sort of one hearing, um, you, you would know at that point in time before you awarded the, uh, or had any plans and specs done. Traditionally, if you have had plans and specs done, you, you, you don't really usually lose that money because you're gonna do that project at some point and the plans and specs sorta, you know, can be carried over for a number of years. But that's the process.
Now, out here, you know, one of the complications we all have is the green acres. How does that really impact our, our taxes, our assessments?
Not assessments at all. It, it impacts property taxes, the part of the project cost that you might spread on the city levy, sure. The green acres is an impact in, in consideration, but the, the methodology for spreading the assessments doesn't typically take that into effect. The fact that a farm might have a lot of frontage feet on a road, Shane might recommend a discounting factor so that they don't end up paying a exorbitant part of the project cost, but not the green acres designation itself.
But they can defer their assessment. You're gonna get the money, but you may not get it-
I understand.
Within that ten years is what he's saying. So you may have, the city may have to upfront that money, you're gonna get it back someday, but-
Right.
Right.
Not right away.
And that's, and the, and, and we didn't talk about this, but in terms of how you assess against these different properties, there's a lot of different options out there. And, and in order to give you more advice, I mean, that's one of the things that we'd have to look at, all the different types of properties and is it commercial, is it residential, you know, industrial? What kind of things are there? But that's a separate topic to try and figure out what that assessment amount should be. But that's, in a nutshell, that's the, the process. And then Shane's got a very valid point is, you know, do you want, you know, where are you at with your road studies and, and what are you thinking?
If I can just make one point, I'm sorry I didn't catch the, the point you're making about the deferrals. We've run into that situation before where we're trying to guesstimate how long a, a specific property might stay in green acres before, let's say, they subdivide it and, and make it for residential development or if somebody's doing a hardship deferral. And you can do things in structuring the bonds as well to minimize the impact on the, the city in that kind of situation. So again, there's no, you know, perfect crystal ball, but there are ways to try to match up the structuring of the, the financing to match the situation on the ground.
And what we're- So in, in the way that Shane would say, okay, this farm has all this frontage and therefore we don't put them out of business. So we customize that portion of it, we'd customize a bonding portion if it was used to predict how we might-
Get the money.
Get the money back.
Yeah, it's, it's, once you figure out which roads you're going to do and we know kind of estimate of construction costs and so forth and we know which properties are gonna be in the assessment area, then we'd have to look at what is the most equitable. What, how do we spread this out so that we are being fair and reasonable to everybody? The only thing is we have to treat each type of property sort of consistently. In other words, you know, so again, it's all out there, there's a lot of, there's guidance on there, there's a lot of articles on this whole thing. If you really wanna put yourself to sleep tonight, go on the League of Minnesota Cities website and look at their, I think it's called their assessment toolkit, you know? So it's, oh, it's, it's a, it's a bestseller, you know? And, uh, so again, it goes into a lot more detail in a lot of these different areas. But again, and it talks about trying to coordinate, you know, and so you can make sure you know about if somebody's gonna challenge or not. So.
All right, so we got to the short version.
Yeah, I don't wanna be the short one?
Yeah. You know, I, I don't know if I've ever believed Bob when he said he's gonna be the shortest one.
Yeah.
Other than maybe height-wise.
Second time tonight.
I know, I know. No more free legal advice for anybody. I can say that, in my height, I'm the tallest to be eleven in my family.
Everybody's rates just went up.
All right, why should we even think about doing this, Shane?
Well, uh, that's a good question, I mean, so-
Again, those tuning in late Shane Nelson, our city engineer.
Right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we haven't done a road project since two thousand eight. And for the past several years, I think we've all known that we've, that we need to do some road project, we need to maintain our roads, uh, but we just haven't quite gotten there yet. And I think that's what we're hoping to accomplish tonight is, what are the next steps? Um, so in two thousand twelve, we did a, a street study on all of our roads within the city. Uh, we actually went out and, and did our ratings of each individual roadway, gave them a numerical rating. Uh, and based on that rating, we determined some maintenance or repair activities. So we also talked a little bit back in two thousand twelve about how, you know, a percentage of our, our gas tax money goes to, to research. And they've done a lot of research on payment management. And they've done a lot of research on payment management and they've generally determined a, a payment deterioration curve. Typical road, when it's, when it's new, will stay in, in fairly good condition for quite a while, approximately 75% of its life. And then it will start deteriorating and the, it actually takes 75% of its life to see the first 40% drop in value. So after that, the next 40% drop in value or drop in condition happens over 12% of the payment's life. So once that payment starts to deteriorate, once you start having cracks, you're going to do some water into the base. It's, it's exponential, that deterioration. So what we've talked about is, you know, we want to try to interrupt that payment deterioration curve. We want to do some scheduled improvements at scheduled times to make our roads last longer, to make them ride better and to overall save the city money over the long term. So not looking at the next five years, looking 30 years or 40 years out in the future. So we also, with this payment study, we estimated some, some kind of general, uh, general cost. So there's the routine maintenance cost. That would be the crack filling and possibly the seal coating. That's so small, you can barely see it here. Crack filling is, is by far our biggest bang for our buck. And if we're doing that, that is a good deal. But, but after crack filling, we're not doing a whole lot of maintenance until we get all the way down to here where a total reconstructs needed. So we're waiting until the, the most expensive repair is needed. And then we generally, you know, the residents may call it to our attention. That's when we do the repair. That, that ends up costing the, the most money.
You're saying that's the, basically the current practice here is crack filling and then not anything else, but
Correct.
There are options in between.
There are options in between. That is, that is correct. So using those standard costs per mile, we, for each road, we identified what improvement or repair was necessary and we estimated the, the cost for those projects in the street study. And in 2012, we had 349,000 in seal coats, almost $2 million in Batumina's overlays and about a million dollars and about $1 million in total reconstructs. So a total of around $3.3 million of, say, backlog. So work that, that should be done or, or could be scheduled relatively soon to make our roads last longer. And again, we're looking to, to try to, you know, make that road last 30 or 40 years instead of maybe 20 or 30 years.
And that was in evaluation five years ago?
It was. That's correct. And so kind of with that, you know, we have, or at least at the time of the study, we had 35 miles of paved road, 29 miles of gravel road. And in today's, in today's dollars, it probably costs right around $350,000 to $450,000 to build a mile of road, a paved road, paved local road. So that's an investment or an asset in our paved roads of somewhere between 15 and 19 million dollars, a very large number. And in our, our gravel roads, probably costs right around 100 to 150,000 per mile to construct those. And so for our 29 miles of gravel road, that's probably an investment of somewhere between 3 and, and 4 million. So we're talking about maybe a, a $20 million investment or asset, however you want to think of it, with our, our road network, our road system. So it is a very substantial number and we have a, a lot to take care of. We have a lot of miles of road.
Shane, I should know this, but my context for now then is fairly limited. Is this all road or are there any streets with, are there any streets that have curb gutter improvements that are part of the road network as well? Or is it all straight roads?
Uh, we do have a, a couple of roads with curb and gutter, yes.
Okay. And are those part of the study or is it?
They were included in the study. They were. So really, I mean, yes, we have some roads that are, that are deteriorated, that are, that need to be reconstructed. We've, I, we've had some preliminary discussions about an overlay on Old Viking Boulevard. I think that's a, a valid discussion, but we, 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 we have a lot of needs. And so part of the task, I think, going forward is, is really identifying what is, you know, what are our, what are our priorities? And normally that is done with a, a five-year plan. And it's kind of, it, it gets somewhat difficult to, you know, read through the text and, and picture in our head what needs to be done where. There's also a graphical exhibit in the street study and the different colors show the different type of maintenance activity that was recommended at that time. So all the, the roads that have a, a blue color are roads that at that time we recommended for an overlay. And so we could look at this and say, well, these roads are all pretty, in pretty good condition. Do we want to think about an overlay to keep them in good condition or actually improve their condition and extend their life? So it may be Old Viking Boulevard. There may be some other roads that we want to think about an overlay for. The, again, so now the overlay, getting back to kind of cost per mile, generally a, a cost of an overlay is somewhere between 130,000 to maybe 180,000 per mile. And that usually depends on how thick the overlay is and, and how much patching is needed. And a lot of times, if you just wait 10 years, it goes from that overlay to a total reconstruct. And now we're looking at a cost of maybe $500,000 per mile. Maybe it's, it might even be upwards of 700,000 per mile. I think for Ebony and Garnett, our estimate was right around 500,000 and I think that was three or 4,000 feet. So it's less than a mile. So with that, I mean, I, I definitely agree that we should consider doing some roadwork. I think we have a little bit of work to do to make sure that we know what our, our highest priorities are. It, it may be Old Viking Boulevard and maybe the, the cities had that, those discussions. I don't know. I haven't been part of those if, if we have. Along those lines, at some point, I would expect development to come back, some new homes to be added to the city and for us to finally get over that 5,000 population. I'm not a planner, so I can't tell you when that might occur, but it might be a good exercise along with this to, to try to come up with the idea. I mean, if it's 20 years out, it's probably not worth talking about. But once we reach that 5,000 population, now we're eligible to receive the MSA funds from the state. And that could be easily a, a couple hundred thousand dollars per year. And that is going to have to be used on our collector-type roads. And we cannot use it on just our local roads that just, you know, a, a dead end called the Sack Street. So, you know, along with this Old Viking Boulevard, we have to consider that that might be a, a candidate in the future for MSA funds. It's kind of a balancing act of, of where, where the money is best spent.
So you're saying in, in the five-year plan, again, doing the background work to determine our priorities and the, the growth rate of the city. If a road was marginal as to decent shape right now and it was an MSA road, a collector that would qualify for that, that might weigh into the choice of which roads are we going to do either way versus which roads we might get funds for
Correct.
near to distant future.
Correct. Just one other thing that we might want to think about when we're, I mean, if we get to prioritizing our roads and and determine a five-year plan, I work with, Bob and I both work with some communities and Bruce, I believe too, or his firm, where they somewhat cluster road projects together. So maybe for a couple of years, you do some smaller type projects. You don't spend as much money. And then on, say, the third year, you have a larger year. Maybe you're going to do closer to a million dollars worth of roadwork that year. I think when you get around that million dollars, that's kind of the ideal size or dollar amount for a bond. Is that correct?
Right. And so that can be the result of aggregating two, three, four, five separate improvement projects, right? You can have these separate assessed deals that we can collapse into one bond issue. They can even be different terms. You can have one that's in a, a 10-year assessment term. I know that's 15, whatever. And we can structure those individually and then smash them together essentially into one bond, which saves you a lot of money and, and gets better interest in the market.
And if we do smaller projects, we're likely not going to the bond market or going to a bank.
Yeah.
And getting a little bit higher interest rate.
Right. Yep.
Okay.
Good point. Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, again, Bruce Kimmel for the viewers, as you pointed out. But we really would want to get as much understanding of the road plan, an updated road plan as possible because we can provide our best advice on financing strategy when we understand, you know, what are the projects? What is Shane thinking about assessments versus potential other funding sources? How might they be clustered from a timing perspective? And then we can come back to you with a, a capital funding strategy that says, okay, over this period of time, here's what we think might make sense in terms of cash funding and debt funding and, and putting that out there for your feedback so that you have a com- confidence in a plan that doesn't just solve a project in 2017 or 2018, but contemplates more of the entire road plan. Maybe not the whole thing, but you, you know that you're not, you know, closing a door on being able to fund future programs just by focusing on the first one in the pipe. So that's a really important consideration.
And most communities who are working, doing what Bruce and Shane have talked about, where they're trying to coordinate projects to maybe smaller projects at one time, two or three, put a couple of projects together for a bigger one in bond. A lot of these, their whole goal is to try and keep the levy level.
Right.
And by doing what, what Bruce is talking about, where you are working with the engineer to figure out which projects could possibly be grouped over the, you know, the next five-year period sort of in a sense, and you're talking with Bruce with his plan. The whole idea is to try and do this so that the levy stays the same, that you've kind of factored in road improvements that you need and you can keep that levy from ballooning all of a sudden.
Right. And maybe it's not completely level, but at least the rate of ascent is manageable, right? And doesn't spike and then go down and spike and go down because that's what's hard to explain to the taxpayers. You know, once it goes down, they want it to stay down, right? And they're upset about spikes back. So you're absolutely right. It's, it's about levy management as well as efficiency in the bond market.
My goal would be not to put the city in debt. The only part that I would see, or I would believe in bonding would be the part where sets it back to the property owners. I think the city should be loving for their share. We should be paying cash for our share as we go. And that would be my goal. I don't think we have enough debt the way it is with our.
So help me understand. So let's say it's a million-dollar project. I know that's a big number, but, and you're going to be assessing 400,000 of it and then the city's share would be 600,000? Are you saying that you would want to pay cash on, cash upfront for the 600,000 or only bond for the 400,000?
Whatever the number is, the city should be leveling their share. However many miles of road we decide that we need to do per year, that's, it's still different than you're paying it upfront. You want to pay in arrears. But so there you're paying, you're leveling for it plus you're leveling for the interest you got to pay back. It's better to have the money in the bank upfront. You pay as you go.
And, and I don't dispute that. The, the trick is levying enough years over time to save up that nut that you can then spend on the project and not have the cost of the project slip away from you. So I have a lot of clients that absolutely believe in paying cash for as many projects as possible. The problem is once you get up to a certain dollar amount, unless you're really willing to increase your levy by a lot in order to cover it, the cost in one year's levy, you have to save up over, you know, two, three, four years. And that, that can get tricky.
But, but if you're going to continue on with that same improvement schedule, you're going to have to do that anyway just to pay the bonds back. You have 35 miles of road and say, say if they last 20 years or if you, and, I mean, we have 65 or 64, 65 total. You divide it by 30, you're going to have to do, or divided by 20, you're going to have to do over three miles a year. And you're, you're going to have to, between what you're going to assess and what you have a city pay, you have to budget for that. And if you don't, then, then you're going to be selling bonds for it. So then you're paying, you're, you're going to have to levy enough to pay that money back plus the interest. It's going to cost you more. Anytime you go to a bank and borrow money, it's going to be cheaper.
No, I understand. There is a cost of buying bonding. I just don't know enough about the road plan to know if you would be incurring a really significant cost each and every year that would be on the town's or on the city's tax rolls. But that's the kind of thing that we could run different scenarios on too. Randy, to your point, what would that look from a levy perspective versus maybe a half and half or whatever the case might be? Because we do get that exact same sentiment from other cities as well.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the, to Randy's point, the, the other thing that we should think about is, you know, we have, I don't know exactly how many miles, but we have quite a few roads that were built like 2000 to 2005. And, you know, some of those roads are starting to, to show their age. And if we could construct an overlay on them, which is a, a less expensive repair, it's a way faster construction timeline and, and get those roads to last longer, it might, in the long run, it might be better than, you know, if we think about now, we're maybe 10 to 15 years into their life. And if at year 20, we start having another one each year that needs to be reconstructed, that could be a, a real big liability. It's, you know, so we could do some, maybe some calculating or some, you know, try to do some predictions on, hey, how many miles of road do we have that are in that 15-year-old range? And in 10 years, if we had to reconstruct all of those or even a portion of them, how big of a number would that be? And that's, it, it is a.
You still have to have the money to pay.
Right. I know. Yeah.
It doesn't matter how you get it. You either, you either got to, you got a levy for it and pay for it or you're going to have to bond for it and pay for it plus interest. So it's the way it is.
Right.
I've been saying that all along since I've been on the council. We're not, we're not putting enough money, we're not in our levy to pay for these roads. And we haven't, we haven't done it.
And just to that point, so again, in the, the street study, we did look at, on a typical paved road, the cost of maintaining that road, the, the, the cost of reconstructing it and then maintaining it over a 30-year period. And they divided it just like a, a per-year cost. And so we, we, we provided this, this table here. And again, this assumes we don't have any catch-up to do. This is, we're just maintaining kind of what we are going forward, even implementing, implementing those programs since day one. If we were to fund 20% of our capital improvement projects, so a 20% city share, 80% assessment, we need a levy of about 240,000. If we went up to 50%, we'd have to levy about 500,000. And if we were going to pay 70% city share, we'd need a levy of about 640,000. So I don't disagree, but there, there is some work already done on roughly how much money we're talking in the levy. And I can say just from experience with other similar-sized communities, $300,000 probably isn't going to be enough to keep up. In order to keep up, and, and I'm not saying city portion, but in how many, the, the construction, the dollar amount of the projects per year is probably going to have to be somewhere closer to, to maybe the, the 500,000 dollar mark. It's just kind of my shooting from the hip number. But it's also supported by this table. If, if we were to be at somewhere around that 50% city cost share, 50% assessment for the property.
And then the only thing dealing with Randy's concern is, you know, there is the cost of borrowing. There's no doubt. But then there's also this cost of lost opportunity. If you miss, you know, Shane's got his, his charts there. And if you miss one of those and the road gets so much more expensive to reconstruct. And that's typically what I've seen in a lot of, of the communities that I work with. They, they missed that window and now it's, it's gotten almost too big for them to, to repair. And they're even talking about maybe letting it go back to gravel, you know. So again, there, it, it's, it's all, it's none of this stuff. This is not a fun topic. This is all the things that are kind of, you have to, it's a balance. This is all the things that are kind of, you have to, it's a balancing act and what's in your best interest. And ultimately, I'd say to all of you, look at it, what is the most beneficial from a cost savings point of view? Is it borrowing the money and doing the road? Because now you can get a much longer lifespan out of it and not have to reconstruct it? Or, you know, do you have, you know, look at the cost of the, of the interest? It's all stuff that you are going to deal with. The only other thing I could say with other communities that have done sort of the program like Shane and Bruce alluded to is that they have kind of figured it out where they have it, where they know when the bonds are going to be able to be paid back, you know, either premature, you know, they have the...
Prepayment.
Prepayment, thank you. Or, you know, they know when the bonds are going to be paid off and they have structured their, this is why I think Bruce was talking about him giving you with some sort of a plan where they, he's got it where you have debt, but your debt is sort of limited. And it's paid off as the new debt occurs. But that's how a lot of these communities are financing these road construction projects to keep their roads in as longevity as we can. It's all options that are available to you though. It's just stuff, this is a big informational meeting tonight. We're giving you a lot of information. This is stuff that you guys will have to give some more thought to. And as, if you decide on, on doing something, well then, as I said, we'll get into more and more detail of it with you. But ultimately, these are your decisions. This isn't something that's put to a vote of residents and stuff. This is all your guys', as the elected officials, you make these calls.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm hoping these guys are taking good notes because we're going to count on them.
I'd like to ask some questions of Mr. Rubio. I mean, you started out tonight with a number and I missed something. I don't recall, 429, is that a statute?
It's Minnesota statutes, chapter 429. It is not a, just one statute. It's a whole body of statutes.
And it addresses assessing?
Right.
Just assessing?
And although the financing that you can do with assessments as well, all of that is in chapter 429. So the bonds that you might sell, you might sell for an assessment project, we call them 429 bonds shorthand because it's all part of the same chapter.
Yeah, so if you go to Minnesota, you go to the revisers on Google. You just type in maybe Google, chapter 429 MN. And the reviser's office will be there and 429, you can click on it. It'll bring up this whole long table of different statutes and then little headings and stuff. But the, you know, like the one about improvement hearings and the notice requirements is, I think that's 429.031. It talks about how do you get this thing started and needing the feasibility report. And it's got to be done by either the engineer or, I think, learn it in this area or something like that. They use language. It talks about specifics, what needs to be in that report.
I can give them a copy of this. It's like a little thing here.
Is that the whole chapter, or?
Yeah.
And that link toolkit that Bob mentioned is actually really good as well. It is dry, but it really breaks apart 429 very well into practical steps that a city would take.
One of the things we've talked about in our meetings, which...
And before you move, that is the assessment toolkit. And if you're taking notes, that's the League of Minnesota Cities. If you go into their website and then there's a search box there, type in assessment toolkit and then this will come up. It's the first document on the list.
One of the things we've talked about in our meetings, I think I'm hearing tonight is kind of crazy for us to talk about anymore. Let's just say there's, as an example, there's 2,000 property owners in the city of Mountaine. And we need $3 million to do Old Viking Boulevard. Can we assess all 2,000 property owners?
No.
Completely out of the question?
If you were going to do all 2,000 property owners, the way you would do that is just through the levy system here. And the city council would just set the levy high enough to account for that project.
And my argument there is with an assessment, there's a start and an end. With a levy, it's only a start, there's never an end.
You could lower that levy at some point, but yeah, I don't understand.
You could.
You could.
Theoretically.
I'm going to be talking about different revenue sources, right to your point. And I'll keep my stuff pretty short. But a lot of cities do grapple with, do we use property taxes? Do we use assessments? Some cities have adopted franchise fees. I'm seeing more and more cities that are doing that as a way to have citywide sharing of the cost, but not have it on the property tax and just have those fees go directly only to road reconstruction projects.
So there's another avenue that we've been exploring. Franchise fees?
So this is a sort of an evolving area. And I'm not saying you guys should do this, but I'm just telling you what I'm seeing out in the, in other communities as a way to say, hey, maybe we want to not do 429 for everything because we have so many projects, we have so many different parcels. You're going to be running improvement hearings all the time. But do you on the flip side want to put it all on the property taxes? Maybe, maybe not. And so then are there other options as well and...
So what is a franchise fee? How does that work?
You've probably been involved with...
It's where you're, we could have the gas company or Conexus or...
Right.
Or your phone, we could all charge them a franchise fee, which they would charge it back to you, you would pay it to them and then they give it, so it's a tax. It's the same thing.
Well, no, it's not a tax. It's a fee because it's not based on property value. It's based on the use of the gas or the electric.
Right.
So you're right, it's a tax in that it comes from the residents, but it's not based on your property value.
But there again, Randy, eventually over time, wouldn't that fee come to an end?
Typically, cities authorize them for a set amount of time. Brooklyn Park just set one up and they set a sunset of ten years for their franchise fee.
So there'd be an end, as with bonding, there'd be an end?
There can be an end to anything. I think the hard part would have been...
As I said before, that can be.
There can, and that's the big thing is once those dollars keep coming in, it's hard to say, hey, let's...
Right. Right. The, the understanding, it's a, people have tried to disguise taxes under the name of fees and a variety of things before. And we've talked about this somewhat. The difference is, I think, is it's not based on property value and it is identifiable. I mean, it has more likelihood of coming to an end because it is an individual identified category as opposed to a levy that goes up. And most people don't dig into levy enough to know why it didn't come down.
And these are all the things you get to grapple with as the city council, so...
There's another question in the back.
One thing, franchise fees are used for tax churches and other nonprofit properties to make them pay. That's, you know, if you want to talk to city council members behind the scenes off the record, that's what they're taxing. They're also taxing government-owned properties that are taxed in. That's where the dream of the franchise fee came from. How can we tax churches? How can we tax schools? How can we tax county buildings and state buildings? The franchise fee, that becomes a tool.
I would just point out though, that most cities have city water, city sewers, city stormwater. Some cities have streetlight utilities. I know a couple of cities that have dock utilities. And those are also payable by nonprofit institutions. And so it's a, it's a question of use of capacity. And do you want to have some of that burden? Now, I don't know how much nonprofit property you even have in Northern, so that might be kind of a moot point. But, you know, utilities, utility fees are something that, I have some very wealthy communities that have traditionally put everything on property taxes. And then they're finally saying, well, they're asking the question, gee, if we're using water or sewer services, should we pay for it through a water sewer fee instead of putting it all on property taxes? And so it's a policy discussion. There's no right or wrong answer, but it's another way of spreading the burden based on use as opposed to property value.
And then Shane, I have a question for you. That street study done in 2012, do you recall what it costed the city? Your fee from your firm?
No, off the top of my head.
What the street study costed?
I do not.
Do you, do you feel that it's been five years? Do we need to do another street study? Or is this adequate enough to go forward with what's been discussed here tonight?
My recommendation is we need to have a plan. And a plan that looks beyond just this year or next year. It looks at maybe the next five years and what the city wants to accomplish during those five years.
All city-owned roads?
Correct.
Not just the few that are in question in our meetings? Old Viking Avenue, Garnett? You're talking about all of them?
Right, there are a lot of other roads. I mean, we constructed, there's quite a few new subdivisions. And then we also did quite a bit of paving, it was before my time, but it was kind of off the assault area.
Yeah, 185th.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I've driven some of those roads recently and they're showing their age. I mean, it's, and so those are other roads where if we scheduled, if we did an overlay now or within the next year or two, we can prevent those from having to be reconstructed in say another, they probably have ten years of life left. But then they're going to be, need to be reconstructed. And if we construct an overlay now, then it's going to extend the life another ten or fifteen years from what it would otherwise be. And so again, it's, the overlay is less money. It's, we can do it in a couple of days versus being out there all summer building a road. And it, you know, extends the life and it makes the road drive nice again.
I had reached out to some people with the, with the handout that the mayor gave us on our last road bridge meeting about this meeting here tonight. And some of the responses, responses were very negative. And they, the people said they wouldn't come because they're not happy with what's going on in the city. And the roads here we're talking about on some of the newer developments, their complaint was they're already falling apart and they're only four or five years old. I don't, I mean, maybe, you know, it's hearsay or just...
Yeah, we don't have anything that's only four or five years old. Our newest road was constructed in 2008, so we're going on...
New Cape, West Carolina?
We're going on nine years. That's Assault Street. The last time I drove that, it was still in very good condition.
And, and for what it's worth, prior to becoming a city, we didn't have the same road standards we have now. I mean, the things when we had our Bob is, is we had him create or produce for us road standards for any new roads coming in. So there's a variety of standards that were applied on some of these roads and some of the developments. Some developments were much better than others. You know, some, some base property was significantly different to start with. And so we're seeing the effect of that. And that's one of the reasons, you know, say Ebony and Garnett has been patched at least three times since we've been a city. And prior to that...
So if a developer comes in to develop a 48 parcel, let's say, and they're going to put in a couple of miles of streets, they have a new set of, the city has a new set of ordinances for that developer to follow, is that correct?
Road standards.
Road standards. Okay, now we're, I'm sorry, road standards. So now what if, I think I remember a few months back, Mr. Ressler wanted to put some kind of a frontage road in or something like that, is that correct?
He didn't want a frontage road.
He didn't want.
He didn't want?
Did not want.
He didn't want, not want.
Well, let's say somebody wanted to do that. They want, would they have to install that under the exact same guidelines as the developer? Although it's just an access road or a frontage road or...
Anybody who put in a road would be a developer. So if somebody's putting in a frontage road, they'd be putting in a commercial property or they'd be doing some development, so it's part of that access to their development, whether it's a housing development or a business development. Access to that would require a road and those roads would be held to the standard.
If it's going to be a road that's turned over to the city, it had to be held to our standards. If it's a private road, that's different.
Right. And what we do now is, you know, we have a lot more standards and stuff. And this developer would have to show us what they're proposing to put in the roads. Those would be reviewed by the city engineer. And once those plans are approved and they, that they meet our standards and they account for drainage and everything else that may not have been, then what we do is we enter into, they get approval by the city. But one of the conditions of that approval is entering into a developer's agreement. And the developer's agreements are about thirty pages, single-spaced, you know? And we make sure, we say you have to do all of these things by the approved plans. And they're either incorporated by reference in the agreement or attached. And we also build into that agreement for these new development, whether it's commercial or residential, that we have the ability at their expense to go out and inspect and make sure that they are, and we do that maybe not every day, but at critical times to make sure that what we negotiated with them and what we approved is actually being put in the ground. And then after that, also in this developer's agreement is warranty. And we have the developer's money. In case they don't do it, we have a letter of credit that we can go and access. And it's 125% of what ever the engineer says the cost might be. So if the engineer says it might cost $100,000 to put all these roads and stuff in for this development, we're going to have 125%.
So is it the building inspector's responsibility to keep the developer's...
It's the city's responsibility and the city usually uses their city engineer and city staff for doing that. So again, it's a thing of trust but verify. We have all these contracts and these checks and balances, but we are out there still checking to make sure and doing testing. There's roll tests and other things that are done to make sure that whatever we agreed to with this developer was in fact done. And if it wasn't, then I get a phone call and I step in.
I just wanted to make a statement. You said before, we, or the city, we had no standards and that's absolutely...
No, no, no.
But the standards, I just want to give a little history. Back in 91, when I first got on the town board, we didn't, they didn't use an engineer for anything. Your engineering was actually probably kind of done by the town board. They'd go out and watch and pave it, yeah, it's black, it's good. But Beck and I got on the town board in 91, that's when we got Hockes and Anderson involved. We came up with our standards. And since they've been involved, our roads are built at a very good standard and they've held up very well. We don't have the problems. And Ebony and Garnett was just before that.
No, I need to read.
Right, but that was built, that developer had gone through the process and started that before we had development agreements and stuff. So that was...
You called us after. The city called us after it was built and we said that this isn't passing roll tests. It's already broken up. We need some help here. And that was kind of, I think, our, that and then the Rogers Lake area were right around that same time.
Well, Rogers Lake was done way before I was on the town board even, but...
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's probably a thirty-year-old road. So it's a thin mat, but it's held up quite well.
Sure.
But that's one of the things that turned around is we, we did come up with standards. We do have a lot heavier build roads.
And all the roads that we've built since then have held up quite well.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, a lot of them, they've been in place for 20 years. You know, a lot of roads are built in the mid-'90s. I mean, think about if it was built in '97, it's 20 years old now. You know, the, right down here off of Five, the Automakers subdivision, that was 2000, 2001. We had quite a few developments, kind of before my time with the city in that 2000, 2001. And so they're approaching 20 years old.
So in a brand-new development change, would you start with a boring test or how do you start?
Yes, the developer is required to submit soil borings. Based on the type of soils, we design the road. You know, if you have better soils, you don't need as much gravel and pavement. If you have not as good soils...
It seems to me, and now that I'm here, that's kind of one of the biggest problems is no soil corrections have been done on any of these old roads because of lack of standards or poor standards. And, you know, you have the problem with...
Barry, you had a question as far as the cost of the study. Our recollection is it's probably around $5,000. And I don't, it didn't exceed $5,000, but it was about $5,000 to put that together.
So you don't think after five years, another...
Well, what, one of the things that has been done, now that original was done in 2012. We've asked Joe to take a look at that and update it. So we've had a couple of updates since then done by Joe. But Shane hasn't gone back and done an actual update on it. We don't have a, the costs are five years old, the projection. And, you know, the, again, you're looking at drainage, you're looking at ditch work, you're looking at a variety of things that also impact, you know, what we found there. Which is one of the reasons we've asked that the road and bridge members all get a copy of that and that be a basis of our discussions, you know? When we look at, you know, when we started, you know, does it, do we look at the worst roads? Do we look at the roads that are in reasonable shape that we can maintain so they don't get worse? How do we best use our money? Thus, you know, the frustration that you guys are feeling on road and bridge is we're running in circles, they were chasing our tails. We wanted to have this meeting so we have a good starting point to say, how do we answer those questions? What's our, what's our legal? What do we need to do? Why would we even do this? Do we need another road study? I agree, we need a plan. And I think it's a good investment. It would cost money to engage the professionals. And I think it's a good investment. It would cost money to engage the professionals. But that we engage an engineering firm and a financial firm to to say, here's a plan for the roads and here's a plan for a a series of of considerations for the council to say, with these road considerations, these financial considerations, what do we finally do to get off the dime? There has been a lot of discussion. There hasn't been a lot of action. Nobody has a great desire to spend money on roads, but a lot of people aren't happy with the way the roads are. So we've gotta bite that bullet, come up with a reasonable plan that's affordable and and affects a long-term plan. So you go to the residents and say, here's, here's what the next five years look like. And here's what that's going to cost us all as residents. Here's what it's gonna cost some of the individuals potentially in assessments. And I think if we have a plan going in, it'll be a lot easier to present to to residents. But it starts with what are the conditions of the roads and and what tactic we wanna take? Do we not not want not want to lose one hundred and eighty-fifth? Let it go too much longer and lose it if we can do something now to preserve it for another twenty years.
Oh, the biggest problem is we need money.
You know, that that is one of the problems. We haven't, we haven't been budgeting enough money for years.
Yeah.
And that's easy to see.
Well, I think that's that's historical now that, I mean.
Two thousand fifteen, we did have Shane do, and Joe and Shane, they did a partial update of that plan. So it was, it's been updated.
Anything else, Shane, that? If 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 you were put in charge of the roads in Now Then, what would your approach be?
Give it to somebody else.
To decline the offer?
Yeah, I mean, I like I said, I I think I would develop a five-year plan that the city would support. So that would be the Road and Bridge supports the plan, the city council supports the plan. And after we have these roads identified, that these are the roads we're gonna focus on for the next five years, uh, you know, that's when we bring Bruce in and and help him, help have him help us with the financing part of it. We we talked earlier about spending our or 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 spending our fixing the roads before they're too far gone or, you know, spending them while they uh, the improvements aren't as as drastic. And I I strongly recommend that. Uh, it just, you know, we 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 don't have all that many roads that are in need of reconstruction. We have Ebony and Garnett, we have Hedgehog that's in really bad shape. We have Old Viking Boulevard that's getting there. But, um, you know, I I think too, you you also need some buy-in from the residents. And if you can spend five hundred thousand dollars overlaying several miles of street versus five hundred thousand dollars on one cul-de-sac that most residents don't even know is there unless they live on it. You know, in general, you're gonna have more buy-ins in the community when you're able to touch more properties. Uh, after you start improving some of the roads, then maybe they'll understand why the levy has to go up or why there's a bond out or or something of that nature.
It also helps on the assessments where it's a program, a plan. And everybody's being treated equally. Because the first people out of the gate, you haven't done this for almost ten years now. And they're all gonna say, why are you picking on me? Why us? Why, you know? And why isn't this my tax dollars and everything? But if you can implement this program, and if it is the four twenty-nine program, you know, if that's the one that you use to 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 move this along and to address these road issues, it gets easier over time because every, this this year it's ours.
My turn.
My turn. But everybody, somebody else got it last year, somebody else's, you're already working on the next year's program, you know. It it, I guess it's it's, I think for, it's almost like a developer when you're talking about that developer's agreement. They they hate it, but when I look at them, I say, everybody gets the same one. Oh, Charlie over here had to do the same? Yep. I didn't wave it for him either. Oh, okay, I'll sign that. So again, it does seem to have a benefit in that situation. Um, but it is something that is a little, sometimes a little difficult, you know, emotionally to get off the ground because it is a departure. You haven't been, as you said, you haven't been levying enough, so your, you know, your levies may go up more to pay for your part of it. If you're starting to assess, people aren't, haven't recognized that. It's hard to do. I just, I'm paying mine. I just got mine about a year ago for my road. But it, I just look at it, it's it's a part of, you know, having a paved road in front of your house. It's gotta be maintained.
Be pretty ironic if you protested, right?
I'm sorry?
It'd be pretty ironic if you protested your assessment.
I thought about it.
Who knows how to do it better?
I thought about it. I thought about it. I actually know the city attorney and I was like, well, you know, I called him up and I said, you know, why don't, why don't I challenge you? Well, what could, let's make a deal, you know?
That's part of the five, even if you do a five-year plan, is how are you gonna finance that? And part of that financing is how are you gonna assess it? What's assessment policy gonna be? For a through road, what's it gonna be for a a dead-end road or a neighborhood road? And that 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 all has to be.
Spelled out?
Spelled out. And we have, and that's the part, that's what we're stuck at. Right there. That's that's the sticking point is what are we gonna assess and what what can the city afford to pay for? Until we come up with that number or process, we're gonna stay stuck.
But I think the first thing is gonna need to be is what roads are you dealing with? Because you you can create all kinds of policies that you want, but if until you actually, you know, decide, okay, this is the the road. And then you look at that road, I mean, and and if you have four lots, it doesn't matter what your policy is. If you only have four parcels on this road and it's gonna cost a million dollars to do because it's a reconstruct, you know, and then I'm gonna tell you, you you're not gonna be able to do that because I can't, I can't defend a very high assessment amount. So again, a lot of this, I I think that's why Shane's talking about, you know, maybe looking at the roads first, which roads could you legitimately do that get the most bang for your buck? Find those roads out. Talk to to Bruce about how you finance all those. What do you, what are your options? And then based on which option you choose, there may be things you have to do. If it's a franchise, maybe you have to do an ordinance. If there is a four twenty-nine, we have to, you have to maybe create some of these policies about how you're gonna be doing it. Again, but it really depends on what you guys wanna do. Okay, so, go ahead, Shane.
I I was just, uh, gonna suggest, maybe we could just take a a minute to to talk about Old Viking Boulevard a little bit. Maybe not spend too long on it, but get a feel. I mean, I I didn't study it in any detail. But when I was, I stopped at home and had some dinner and I kinda counted the properties along Old Viking Boulevard. I have a rough idea of what the assessment would be if you were, you know, say a fifty percent assessment. Um, and and I think it also helps to look at the maps because you can see the different types of properties and the different types of situations.
I think we isolated Old Viking would be the one to start with. I think the questions come into, um, it's been questioned, the fees of the, um, the benefit test. How much of a benefit are you getting if you're currently on a paved road and we're improving your paved road? Um, because that factors into how much you can assess. Um, how often does direct versus indirect, um, assessing happen? Is Old Viking a, not that it has to happen, but it'd be at least the information that would be good to know if that's a good candidate because it is a a decent collector road, that maybe we have to factor that into the assessment policy. And so so I think we we at least, yes, we we understand everything needs to be looked at at a big picture, but there's some some projects that we've at least identified that was identified in two thousand fifteen that we can at least start with these. Old Viking, um, Rogers Lake, Ebony and Garnett potentially. So but it, I mean, I think the the big reason tonight was how do we come up with an assessment policy? So that we can use that because when we, um, engaged Shane to start, okay, let's go start with feasibility study. The first big question was, well, what's your assessment policy? So I think that's at least the first to start.
There's a question, when you talk about the term assessment policy, it means many different things to many different communities. And so I don't know what you are talking about as an assessment policy. For most communities.
Okay, we don't either.
Okay. A lot of communities that don't do a lot of four twenty-nine or even, you know, those, they have to come up with, in a sense, how much is our contribution? And some communities say for a full reconstruct, we will pay X percentage. So and if it's a ju- if it's a overlay, we'll pay X percentage. It may differ because sometimes communities put an incentive for you guys doing the maintenance work like an overlay that may give more strength to the road and increase the longevity of the road. Versus if you guys say you don't wanna do this project and you wanna let it go all the way to a reconstruct, well, then maybe there's a little bit more of a penalty. You guys have to pay more. It's kind of an incentive program to get buy-in from residents for paying, you know, get doing the road now.
The maintenance.
Do the maintenance now so that we can get more longevity. And ultimately, I think it keeps your, the the residents' costs down. So again, then there's other communities that look at this as a assessment policy of are we going to do it by parcel, by linear feet, uh, in this situation? I mean, what happens if there's a, uh, a corner lot, you know, all these, you can get into all kinds of minutia. And that is stuff that takes a lot of policy and a lot of, you know, because everybody's, when you go to one of these improvement hearings, everybody will be able to read that assessment toolkit online. You know, you Google assessments, there'll be articles. Everybody says, why aren't you doing it this way versus this? And again, you have to look at all the different factors. And it may be different on how you determine what assessment methodology you're going to use based on what road and what you're faced with. The law just says that when you do one of these projects, you treat the same classification of property the same. So if it's residential, you're gonna treat the residential. Maybe that's a per parcel, you know. Like, some people call it a driveway. You got a driveway, you're getting a a a an assessment. Some people may look at a, what do you do with a large farm? You know, if can, under your zoning, can that forty acres be subdivided into five lots? So then the question for the council is, do you assert five parcels? I mean, you, you can get, you can go into into the, you know, the city hall right now, work with Liz and get your land subdivided in five lots. Therefore, you should be paying five assessments. So you're not paying ten, you're paying fifty thousand dollars because each one of these is gonna have a, uh, an assessment against you. Because you can, you could go and subdivide that. Or do you look at that one large forty-acre parcel and say, you know what, it's really being farmed, it's not being developed, there's, you know, we'll we'll just do it as one parcel. So those are, that's, that's where the 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 nitty-gritty is. And that's what, when you say your assessment policy, that's what it's confusing to people like me because it could mean a lot of different things to everybody. And I I just wanna say that the the problem we have out here, and that's really what we're trying to decipher, the the mountain we keep traveling around. Because we have two designations, really, RRA and Commercial Industrial. And so that farm might be a hundred and sixty acres is an RRA, as is the house next door to it on two and a half acres or five acres. And so and and we don't wanna do something that's going to so impose a penalty on the the larger parcels that they can't afford to keep them. And we we wanna have a policy that allows people to keep their their parcels. But we still have to be able to afford the improvements. And the the other question I have is, so let's say in Old Viking, we decide on that project, the city's gonna take fifty percent and the the resident's gonna take fifty percent. Does the four twenty-nine test apply there? Because that fifty percent that they get assessed, and how do you, how do you evaluate that their property was improved by that amount? Their value increased by that amount by an overlay?
Exactly.
And that's the. Does the four twenty-nine apply and an overlay on Old Viking? Everything could apply.
Yeah.
And it depends on the.
You could also, you could also waive your, you can waive your 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 rights essentially, right? I mean, if somebody really wants the project, they can say, we're not gonna protest the valuation, the benefit test. And we've seen that here in, I think in Now Then. There was a project where somebody really wanted it to happen.
Yeah, we've done it. Yeah, and I I I did a waiver form for a community the other day, on Monday. And it basically said, w- you know, we are hereby petitioning for this project. As one of the petitioners, we want this road project done. It, you know, and basically, we agree that we will not challenge the assessment and that we agree our property benefited by the amount of of the being assessed. And we will not challenge it under any constitutional, statutory, or, you know, other grounds. And I make it as broad as possible for a, up to a specific dollar amount. And in this case, they thought it was gonna be ten thousand dollars. So I set up that, but I also wanna make sure I can, this is subject to court scrutiny if somebody tried to. So I said, anything over ten thousand, you reserve the right to appeal the assessment amount.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not gonna go through all my material. It's already pretty late and you probably don't wanna hear all the bond financing stuff. But before you talk about some specifics, if you do wanna delve into Viking, I thought some of the points I was gonna make might be useful context. If you'd be open to that or?
Yes.
Okay. Take that. So when I talked to Cory, um, we agreed that I would just sort of give a high-level overview of some of the things that we might be able to help Now Then with. I probably put in more than is really necessary, but this might be a good reference uh, document for you guys as well. And I sent it in PDF format to Cory as well. Um, I put a bunch of ideas and options in here. Not all of them are gonna be applicable to you and not all of them will be appropriate for you, but it's just more food for thought. Also, you know, as I talked about, we help develop capital plans. We're not just the bond guys. We're the ones that will work with Shane, work with Bob, to figure out what can you afford to pay cash on from either fund balances or current year levies? If you can do a cash funding program, that's great. But the economics of these projects are sometimes such that you can't actually afford to accumulate enough money to do your share. And that's where bonding comes in. So it's a balancing act, but I just know that, you know, we're here to help come up with a financing strategy, a funding strategy really, because financing, I think, kind of assumes bonding. And funding is really what we're talking about. Paying, getting the money, however you're gonna get it from cash or debt, to pay the contractors, uh, to do the work. So you know who we are. I'm not gonna go through this. I just wanted to note that we do a lot of this capital budget planning under financial management as well as utility rate studies. That's not so germane here, but, um, that's an increasing amount of what we do. It's helping people figure out how to do these projects, not just selling the debt. And, you know, some of these are cities that are all of a sudden getting MSA dollars. Some of these are counties that are starting to put these half-cent sales taxes in place. And it's figuring out what to do with those revenue streams as well, franchise fees as well. So the basics, we've already covered a bunch of this on this slide about the legal foundations. But different rules for different types of entities. You had different rules when you were a township versus what you have now as a city. Um, debt limit, I won't really go into that. Um, one one part of jargon I wanted to clarify under assessments and utility bonds or general obligations. Sometimes people say GO bonds and they only mean bonds that are paid back with tax levy. When in fact, in Minnesota, virtually any kind of bond that you would issue, especially for street projects, are GOs. So whether you're paying that back with special assessments in part, whether maybe you do put a franchise fee in place and you you plan on using those franchise fees to pay the debt, ultimately, you're still saying, no matter what it takes, you will levy to the extent necessary to pay the debt service on time and in full. That's what that full faith and credit pledge means. And that's why the bond investors are willing to give cities like Now Then such good interest rates, right? Because Minnesota communities don't default on their bonds. They just don't. It's not Michigan, it's not California, it's not Rhode Island. There's just no defaults in Minnesota on GO bonds. So you also have tax exemption. You're familiar with that and why that helps get you a very low interest rate because the interest that investors earn is tax-exempt. BQ, bank qualification, is another factor that is absolutely applicable to Now Then because I don't envision you ever selling more than ten million dollars of debt in a given year. And that's part of the tax code, at least currently, that allows you, uh, banks that buy your bonds to get a better uh, tax advantage and so they give you an even better interest rate. But when we're looking at bonding, we wanna focus on what are you doing? You know, what are the physical mechanics? Is it just patuminous? Is there any curb and gutter? For other cities that have, you know, sewer and water, we really delve into are they replacing sewer and water pipes? Because we wanna know exactly what the physical components are of a project so we can figure out how to apply some of these financing tools, right? For you, it's gonna be fairly straightforward, at least at this point in the city's development. But we wanna look at those physical components. How much is it gonna cost? When are you gonna do the project? And what other projects? I talked about that before. Really understanding how does this twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen project fit into the bigger picture? So we're not screwing up your ability to do those future projects. as well. So that's just kind of fast context. So on to 429, this is more just for your own reference. And I've seen Bob's reference materials as well as the LMCs. They're much more detailed and very good in terms of the mechanics, but we've covered a lot of those points already. Again, my job with 429 is really to figure out, how are you going to get those revenues and how do we structure the financing to match up, right? And do we not do some of the funding? Do we not do some of the financing because you expect to get a lot of prepayments? And that can happen in certain cases. Also, I want to point out that while we typically will sell the bonds right after that assessment hearing and right after you get your prepayments from folks that just want to write a check, there are cities that say, you know what, we're going to fund our improvement projects out of city cash upfront. And then we're going to do our bonding at the very end when we know exactly what we spent and we have everything buttoned up perfectly. I'm guessing that Now Then, for some of these projects, doesn't have the cash reserves to do that. But that's a way of, you know, avoiding some of that uncertainty. And I just wanted to raise that temporary bonding is another way that might be applicable. We can talk more about that later. What I really wanted to focus on is street reconstruction bonds. This is a relatively new tool. And it was an answer to cities telling the legislature that they had projects, maybe downtown streets or other streets of general importance to the community, where they didn't want to assess. And there was really not a good, or they only wanted to assess maybe 10 or 15%, and they weren't going to reach that 20% threshold for 429, right? And there wasn't a really good way for a city to issue GO bonds to do those projects that were going to be predominantly paid back with tax levy. So street reconstruction came about, what do you think, Bob, maybe 10, 15 years ago?
Probably about 10 years.
10 years ago. And it's like it's, the name implies mostly for street reconstruction, which can include mill and overlay. It's not necessarily for full reconstruction. But you can also make certain safety improvements, certain realignments if it's for safety reasons. And so it can be just for more than a straight mill and overlay or a straight reconstruction. The key thing is that there's a plan that needs to get approved. It's not subject to protest, well, it's not subject to a public vote, except that unless people really oppose the plan, they can circulate a petition for a 30-day period after the hearing on the street reconstruction plan. And if they get enough signatures, then that can stop the plan. But in a lot of these cases, they're having those community meetings, like you would with an assessment deal, they're getting buy-in. People can see why the city is issuing these street reconstruction bonds. And you typically don't see a lot of public opposition because people want their roads to be in good condition. The, the vote requirement on the city council just changed FYI. And I've got the right vote there. It's two-thirds vote now. It used to be an unanimous vote and that just got changed here in 2017. So that's something to think about when you might not want to use assessments or again, not be up to 20% for a certain project. And even if you're using, even if you're pledging your property taxes to pay back the bonds, you can also supplement with other funding sources. So you could use a franchise fee. You could use, if you ever set up a stormwater utility, you could use some of those revenues to offset. There's ways that you can reduce the property tax levy component of this. And that's what Brooklyn Park, who is one of my clients, does. They sell these street reconstruction bonds to repave a whole bunch of streets at once, in a whole chunk of the city. But then they use these franchise fees that I mentioned to pay for that. And they just use bonds to jumpstart the program. And after this year, they're going to be doing it on a cash basis. So they wanted to get a head start and do a whole bunch at once to build public perception and buy-in. And then they'll be doing it on a pay-as-you-go cash basis, using the franchise fees after this initial kickstart, if you will. Utility is really not too important here. I just wanted to point out that if you ever did have utilities, you can sometimes actually pay for road improvements if it's considered ancillary to the, the, the utility improvements. And Shane, I know you've run into that before where you can say rebuilding the street is actually only necessary because of the water and sewer pipes. And so you can use this tool instead of assessments. And it can work pretty well.
You can also use chapter 444 for strictly drainage improvements.
Right.
And that's something that is, I don't think we've done a lot of that either, but in some cases, you need to do a large drainage project and that's, you can use that.
Exactly. And that's, that's where you're setting up a utility fee for stormwater for drainage and using those revenues to pay the debt service. Yep. So again, I'm trying to go fast here, but we'd be happy to, and I've got cards if any of you want to send emails or give me a call too. Once you figure out what kind of bonds or what combination of bonds you might want to sell for a certain project if you can't do it all with cash, we look at how are you going to actually get the money, right? And you've done it two different ways. You've done a full competitive sale, and that's actually when the city got its first credit rating. And you've done bank placements. And the factors here are how big is the bond issue? You know, how much are you looking to borrow, over what period of time? What's going on in the market? How quickly might you need the money? In general, I think, Bob, you said this, or maybe Shane, I forget, a full competitive sale is going to get you a better interest rate, but it's going to cost more money upfront. So you're only going to want to do that once a bond is maybe over $600,000 or $700,000, maybe $500,000. Anything less than that, you're probably going to want to go right to do a competition with local banks because that's going to have less upfront cost. And even though the interest rate might be a little bit higher, you're still probably going to do better with a bank placement in that situation. So the last three city bond issues you can see here, the first one in 2011 where we were equipment certificates, that one you did on a bank placement basis. It was only about $250,000. You did a refinancing of about $700,000 on your 2006 bonds. And that was a full competitive sale that did very, very well for the city. I should note that on that sale, you got an A-plus rating from S&amp;P. You are now three notches higher with S&amp;P. And your AA plus rating is in the stratosphere, especially for a city of this size. They look at your property values, they look at the relative wealth values in the community. And they're saying that even though you have very little debt and even though you have a relatively low levy and, you know, fairly minimal service levels, because in a lot of ways, you still operate like a township. And, you know, residents are very happy with that. They're saying, these factors show that you are extremely creditworthy. AAA is the very best. You're only one notch lower than that, which being, there's a lot of large cities in the metropolitan area that have, you know, AA plus ratings. So you're right on par and your borrowing capacity in the market is right on par with those larger communities, for what it's worth.
Bruce, just, just touching that. So you're saying our achievement of an A-plus at that time was impacted by that, that bond, that competitive bond?
Yep. You, we determined when we were doing that refinancing that it would be cost-effective to get a credit rating as opposed to selling the bonds non-rated. And so we worked with Corey and talked to S&amp;P and, and they assigned an A+. And since then, they've upgraded you by three notches, which is pretty much unheard of. It's really outstanding. Some of that is due to S&amp;P changing some of their criteria, which has worked in your favor. But it's also been your stable financial management. So, you know, you may be right, you may not be levying enough to do what you need to do, but you're in a very good starting position if you decide to access the capital markets for any of this stuff. So then I wanted to show you interest rates. This chart's a little fuzzy, but this is what's called the Bond Buyer Index over the last 30 years. The BBI is just every week, this newspaper called The Bond Buyer, it's a fascinating newspaper, read it every day. They measure an average interest rate for a bucket of bonds that are maturing 20 years from now. So right now, they're looking at bonds that mature in the year 2037, right? And right now, the BBI is at 350. So that's sort of an average interest rate in the national marketplace. You can see how over the last 30 years, we've been going down, 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 down. And I keep on saying, well, rates have to go up eventually. And we reached an all-time low last July, almost exactly this time. It was 280. And you can see that's the little diamond. And then over the fall, and then after the election, we got the so-called Trump bump, right? And up through January, rates went up 120 basis points, so up to 4% on the BBI. But now we've dropped 50 basis points or 0.5% because people don't expect as much inflation as we originally did around the time of the inauguration. People thought there was going to be tons of infrastructure spending at the national level that was going to crowd out local bonds. That's not happening. So for a variety of reasons, bond rates have come back down, even as the Fed has been increasing their rates, right? So munibonds are still just sort of wavering in a very low interest rate environment. Who knows how long they'll last, but I wanted to share that. So then just on a hypothetical basis, I wanted to show you what would a possible, you know, just purely sample bond issue look like. So I said, what if you wanted to bond for a million bucks of project cost this fall? And that's not going to happen, but it was just easy to assume this fall. So the process for getting to that point would be, you would give us the go-ahead to come up with a financing structure, working with Shane primarily on making sure that that worked for the projects. We would have a pre-sale discussion. And if it's a 429 bond, this would all come well within, well into that process, right? Probably when you're either very close to or at that second hearing, the assessment hearing. But we would have a pre-sale discussion, walk through all of the bond structure recommendations, get all of your questions, and get the green light from you to go on to the next step. Basically, a month later, we would have that competitive sale and you would award the bonds to the winning bidder, okay? Then about a month later after that, you get your money with munibonds. It's always, you get all the proceeds at once. It's not like a commercial loan where you're taking draws. So you might get, you would get a million bucks in this case in your bank account, all at once in October. And then if it is a 429 deal or a tax levy deal, then in November and December on this timeframe, you would finalize those details, get them to the county, so that they can go into effect for fiscal 18, okay? So we estimated 1,500,000. That funds a million plus about 45,000 of issuance costs. And bonds are always sold in $5,000 increments. So there's about $4,000 of rounding, which goes to your project fund. The issuance costs are the, basically the sales commission that the underwriting firm takes, the ones that buy the bonds. That's not us, we're just the advisors. But they take, it's like points on a mortgage, basically. So it's their fee, it's our fee, it's the bond attorney, they're the ones that give the legal opinion saying that this is a legal debt of the city of Now Then and it's tax exempt.
And that's not me, that's not me. My insurance doesn't cover that.
Yeah. That's, that's a, that's a big insurance policy because if, if that bond attorney ever gets it wrong and the IRS says that it should be taxable, you're going to have some really unhappy investors, right? So you're absolutely right.
And there's lawyers in the community that's, are called bond counsel. They specialize in this. And that's who you go to and somebody will get, issue an opinion.
Yep, exactly. So then I assumed a 10-year repayment term, just starting right away in fiscal 18 through 27. I should note that in Minnesota, the way typically you structure your bonds is that what gets levied or what gets assessed for collection in 18, you know, with your April and your October property tax collections, goes to making an interest payment on August 1 of that fiscal year. And then the principal and interest payment on the following February 1 of 19, okay? So that's, that sometimes gets people tripped up. But you're basically levying or assessing, collecting those dollars and applying it to a payment that happens at the first part of the next year. We ran the numbers based on current market rates for a city like Now Then rated the way you are with the BQ designation as well. And the average interest rate is just over 2% by our estimation. And debt service would be about 116,000 a year. So I included those charts here on the last two pages. You can see how the, the sources and uses of funds tie out. I should note, this doesn't assume any cash into the deal from the city. You know, sometimes we would want to have the full project amount, but show either prepaid assessments or city equity into the sources and then a reduced bond amount, right? Ideally, we want to show the full project costs so that you can tie it out and explain it to people that, yeah, we're only bonding for 50% of the project or 60% of the project and not the whole thing. And then finally, Mayor and Council, you can see the estimated debt schedule over 10 years. These are how bonds are structured with individual maturities, principal amounts, and individual coupons that investors would be purchasing. And you can see how they range from 1.1% up to 2.2%. And again, the all-inclusive cost, including with the cost of issuance, is about 2%. So to Randy's point, you are paying interest, absolutely. It's just a question of, you know, what can you afford? What can the assessment payers afford? And how can we structure the financing to get you the money when you need it between cash and debt to get the project done? So that was pretty fast, but I hope that was helpful context as you think about funding tools and how you can use a variety of statutory authorizations in Minnesota to finance road projects.
Shane, based on your earlier comment, were you going to try to guesstimate what a cost to individuals would be if we overlaid Old Viking?
Yeah, so in 2012, I estimated 430,000 for a two-inch overlay. Based on that cost, if the city were to pay, say, 50% of that cost and assess 50%, that means that you have $215,000 to assess towards the benefiting properties. A rough, well, dinner estimate of properties is at 66. So that yields an assessment of right around 3,300 per unit. That's no indirect access. That's counting a 40-acre farm, the same as a two-and-a-half-acre parcel. But I don't think that's all that bad. I mean.
I would assume higher than that, I guess.
Yeah. And, and again, it's because it's an overlay project. If we were talking reconstruction, that would be, that number would be closer to, for sure closer to 10,000. I mean, if not.
Wow. So what was that? Okay, so you used the 2012 number?
Right. So a 2012 number of 430,000, assuming a city cost share of 50%. So 50% is assessed to the benefiting property, that's 215,000. And I'm guesstimating 66 properties that yields an assessment of right around 3,300 per unit.
So in 2015, you guesstimated 540,000. How, how does that, is there a simple way of calculating?
Yeah, so I would do the 540,000, 50%. So that was 270,000 divided by 66.
4,090.
Yep. Now it's around 4,100. And that's going to be part of our discussion, you know. If you think that's a reasonable assessment amount, is that a reasonable assessment amount if you live on a local road or giving, given that Old Viking is maybe more of a collector road, should the assessment amount be lower? That's a policy.
I believe there's a public access to.
Yes.
Is that owned by the DNR? Let's just say it is owned by the DNR. Are they exempt from the assessment?
In a sense, yes. However, let me qualify, I have to qualify that. You have to negotiate with them ahead of time. If you go and you put the assessment on and you have not gotten their blessing for that assessment, they could pay it, they're not legally obligated to do so. So generally, what you're supposed to do under the statute is get in contact. Once we know, kind of, we have this information from Shane, we kind of know what it is, then we need to go and approach them and ask them to pay that. And they look at, what is their benefit? Is there a major lake that we're trying to encourage people to go to? Is this access road that is going to be done? Is this one that everybody uses for putting their boats into the water? Is it going to a park? You know, something like that. So in a sense, they have the right to say yes, and they have the right to say no. But if you wait until after the project because you forgot about them, and I've had some communities have called me and they, they said, could you negotiate for us? We didn't realize the DNR was one of these parcels. I've gone in, I've had some success, other times I have had none. Sometimes it's a luck of the draw on who you get.
There's also a cemetery on that road. How does that play into the whole assessment then?
I guess that one goes, is it public? Is it private? I mean, and again, you've got to know that, you know, some of these things are, when you get into this, that's when we get into the nitty-gritty. And then we do a And then we do adjustments based on that. Because the other things you have to look at is, you may have a parcel, and, but there may be all wetlands, or it's not buildable for some reason. Well, then we don't include that. So again, once you figure out the road, then we start looking at that, and then we start, is there any problems with this? And start adjusting, and then we make sure it's still something that can be done. But the one reason you have such a good assessment number here at, you know, thirty-three hundred is because of the huge number of parcels. Because if you are taking that same cost, and you're dividing it about fifteen houses, because that's all that are on this road, well, of course, the number's going to jump up. So again, those are all the things you look at.
Would it, Shane, would it be beneficial to do a traffic study? And the reason I ask is to sell this to the public. I'm just going to guess here. I'm sure that on Old Viking Boulevard, there's probably more traffic...